Glancing at the camera and then glancing over to see all of you. So I hope that's not distracting. And the meeting is now in session. The first thing I need to do, this is a little, obviously a little bit different for us. We haven't gone through this virtual meeting process. So I ask everyone to please be patient. The first thing I need to do for purposes of compliance with the right to know law is read a rather lengthy statement. Which reads as follows. As Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, I find that the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing GoToMeeting for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen. And if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following number. And password 780960357. Or by clicking on the following website address. H T P P S colon forward slash forward slash global dot go to meeting dot com. Forward slash join forward slash 780960357. This meeting is also, will also be aired, is also being aired on New Market Channel 13 for those wishing to watch on TV. And streaming at W W W dot newmarketnh.gov. Channel dash 13. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have been provided on the town's website. At W W W dot newmarketnh.gov forward slash zoning board of adjustment. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-3617, extension 1321. Or email at channel13@newmarketnh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. And I can see that we have a quorum of the Board and I believe we have in fact the entire Board here in attendance at the moment. Mr. Daigle, Mr. Rosa. Wayne, here he is, there he is. Mr. Minutelli, Mr. Drago, Mr. Crowley, and Mr. Stack. Very good. It's also important and required by the road to know law, if anybody has anyone else present in the room with them, if they could provide that information, that would be, that is required and would be very helpful. Is everyone alone in their respective rooms at the moment? Seeing heads nodding. Thank you. Okay, so our first order of business is always, and I know it's out under the circumstances, is the pledge of allegiance. So if you wouldn't mind. A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have the advantage of having a flag right outside my window here in Manchester. Okay. Next order of business is the approve, the review of the minutes of the January 6, 2020 meeting. I was not in attendance. Does anybody have any comments on the January 6, 2020 minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, January 6, 2020. Do you folks hear me?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. It's Bob Daigle.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Bob. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wayne. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And I abstain due to my absence from that meeting. Next order of business is the review and Yes, Diane?
With all due respect, I just wanted to let you know you're supposed to have a roll call vote for every vote that's taken by the Board. So it's clear to the public and viewing public. Thank you very much.
Well, that's, thank you for that. As you, as I say, this is different for us. So going back to the January 6, 2020 minutes, Bob Daigle.
Aye.
Steve Minutelli.
Aye.
James Drago.
Aye.
Wayne Rosa.
Aye.
I don't think I have, I don't think I need the alternates to vote, do I, Diane? I don't believe so.
We have five members voting?
Yeah, and I'm abstaining because I was absent from the meeting.
That's fine.
But four out of five is sufficient.
Correct.
Thank you for that reminder. So moving on to the review and approval of the January 13, 2020 minutes. Any comments, changes with respect to those minutes?
Bob Daigle, I move we accept as presented.
I second.
Thank you, Wayne.
Chris, the only, Steve Minutelli, Chris. The only thing is in the upper left-hand corner of these minutes. It, it, the date is incorrect. It reflects January 6th, so that, that needs, that's just an editorial change that needs to be made by whoever types these up.
Okay. I consider that a friendly amendment. Further changes, suggestions, revisions to the January 13, 2020 minutes? Okay, Wayne Rosa.
Aye.
Steve Minutelli.
Aye.
James Drago.
Aye.
And Connor, I think was appointed to that meeting, so Connor Crowley.
Aye.
And I vote aye. That's unanimous, so I won't ask for nays. And Mr. Daigle was excused and abstains. Correct, Bob?
Correct.
Okay. So the January 13 minutes are approved, subject to the minor corrections proposed by Steve Minutelli. Okay. The next order of business is the application for an appeal from administrative decision, reference section 32-10 of the New Market's zoning ordinance, requested by Caitlin Ferretti, 90 Main LLC, regarding the change of use of the first floor from a tattoo parlor to a cat cafe. First floor will be divided into two parts. A cafe side with food prep, kitchen, bathroom, and some seating. And the other section will be a relaxed lounge space with seating and a few adoptable cats from Cattail's Rescue. The proposed use, specifically the boarding and adoption of rescue animals, was determined by the town to be not allowed by right in the M2 zone. It does not fit within the current definitions and permitted uses. The property is located at 90 Main Street, tax map U2 lot 31, in the M2 zone. And what we typically do, Ms. Freddie, are you going to be speaking, or is your attorney going to be speaking on your behalf?
If you will allow it, we would both be happy to speak with you.
That's fine. I just want to explain to you and your attorney the way we do things in New Market, which is going to give you an opportunity, we've read all of your materials, so please don't read your materials back to us. Just a waste of your time. But this is your opportunity to, to make your case why you are entitled to prevail in your appeal. We will hear you out patiently. I will open the floor for public comment. Depending on what the public comment is, give you an opportunity to respond, if you, if you want to, to whatever comes up in public comment. Then we'll close the public comment portion of the, of the meeting, and then the Board will have an opportunity to ask questions. Does that all make sense?
Sounds great.
Okay, so please go ahead.
Sure, sure. I'm Angela Hayden. I am counsel for the Tipsy Tabby and Ms. Freddie, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. This is definitely a different experience doing it this way, so I've appeared, not before New Market before, but before some other zoning boards, and I think it's great that technology makes it so we can all, all see and connect with each other this way, under what we're, we're dealing with these days. And I appreciate your sharing that you've all had an opportunity to read our materials, so I definitely will not read that or provide an in-depth recitation. One, one thing that I did want to address, that I, I don't think I did in our written submission, is it's, it's really important to distinguish what's going to be happening with the Tipsy Tabby on the cat side. I don't think there's any question about the operation of the restaurant portion of it, and I think the, the open question is, what is the, the cat side? The regulations that relate to a cat rescue are quite voluminous. They require certain veterinary oversight, health certificates, vaccinations. Cat rescues, or any animal rescue really, is going to vet families and potential adopters of those animals. And that function actually is going to be very much staying with Cattail's Rescue, and that's why Ms. Freddie partnered with a cat rescue for this, and, and this is a pretty common way that cat cafes around the country have structured their, their business, and the way that they do things is they keep it separate. So while the Tipsy Tabby isn't going to be operating as a cat rescue, they are going to provide the opportunity for people to connect with adoptable animals. You know, very much similar to going to a Petco on a Saturday morning, or at some other event along those lines, but the, the primary responsible, responsibility for actually meeting the regulations and following the, the cat adoption, cat rescue requirements will be firmly in the hands of Cattail's, so I think that's a really important distinction. And like I said, this is a pretty common way that other cat cafes have structured their businesses, and it's still a very developing industry. I think it's actually very exciting that the first one in New Hampshire could be in New Market, as I'm in the process of moving my own office from Exeter up to New Market. But, you know, I can speak personally that I've had several people who have become aware of my involvement in this project and are very excited to see something like this come to New Hampshire. I would like to give my client an opportunity to speak because her enthusiasm absolutely eclipses mine, and I, I think it's worth sharing that.
Hello, everybody. I'm Caitlin Ferretti, obviously. Probably a lot of you on the Board don't know me yet because I'm new to town. I am a New Hampshire native. I grew up in Pittsfield, but the past five years I've lived in Georgia. And I worked at a veterinary hospital down in Georgia, and you know, I was in charge of anesthesia. We were a dentistry practice. Every day was surgeries, you know, two to five surgeries a day. And it was very rewarding work, but I always enjoyed my volunteering at a rescue organization down there more. And
Yep, I'm trying to. You've got to chill a little bit here.
Are you able to hear me okay?
Just a moment. Somebody has some noise going on in the background? Can you please mute your, mute your microphone if you're not speaking? Thank you, Ms. Freddie. Apologies for that. Please carry on.
Oh, it's okay. I know this, I've done a couple of these the past couple of months, and it's always an adventure. But anyways, working down in Georgia and volunteering, I was enjoying myself immensely. I did miss home, and on my birthday, my husband, John, he brought me to Java Cats, which was a new cat cafe that had opened in Marietta. And when we got there, I knew that that's what I wanted to do. Everybody in there had a smile on their face, a hot drink in their hand, and a potential, you know, new family member sitting in their lap, and it was just a great way to mix my passion for animals with my joy of being with the public. As an anesthesiologist at a vet practice, I didn't see any people all day. So anyways, an opportunity came that we could come home to New Hampshire, which we couldn't say no to, and we landed here in New Market. It happened that we liked the property that we were purchasing, but finding this vibrant town was just a bonus. And we've grown to really love our new hometown. So I had initially thought of Portsmouth first for this new business venture, but I just, I can't say no to New Market, and being on the bus line to the college students who will love to, to see the cats, they don't have cats in their dorms, so an opportunity for them to, to have that experience, I just, New Market was just perfect, and I really appreciate you guys all giving me the opportunity to talk to you and explain what my plans might be, and give you an overview of what a cat cafe is. Thank you so much for reading the materials. And that's really all I have to say is I just, I really appreciate the opportunity, and I hope I can make you all proud of New Market, even more so than you must be already.
Can I just ask quickly, who's responsible for the cats on, on your site?
Cattail's Rescue will be in charge of all of their medical needs and all of their adoption needs. I will have staff on site that will make sure that the cats are safe and the interactions with the customers are safe with the cats. And Cattail's has a lot of volunteers that are excited to be a part of this and to come and check in on a probably daily basis, and they'll do all the transportation for the cats, and was there any particular aspect of the cats' care that you were concerned about that I could address?
No, I just was curious who between your staff, yourself, and the, the adoption agency was actually responsible for the cats when they were in your building?
Right. I guess it'll be a team effort, but they'll be well cared for, and the Department of Agriculture will determine how many cats will be allowed to have.
Okay. Attorney Hardy, I don't know if you're still there? Not Attorney Hardy, excuse me.
Hayden, I am here. It's okay.
Sorry, Hayden. So which, which, which definitions are, I saw in your materials, you were looking at the definition of service.
Correct.
Is that?
That seems
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I can just finish. Does that mean that you feel like the use already meets the definition of restaurant?
Yes, and I, and I believe that the denial actually acknowledged that the restaurant definition was met. The concern was about the characterization of the cat side of the business, and it, and it was, I believe that denial referenced it as a cat rescue. And so I think that distinction is important, that the cat rescue is, the, the rescue has a different function and different requirements, and this is more along the lines of a service in the sense that they're providing that opportunity for adoptable animals who, who can tolerate the environment. That's a really important part of this, too, is that not every cat's going to be a good fit for this environment, and I, I think that Cattail's is very cognizant of that, and I, I know Ms. Freddie is certainly very cognizant of that as well. But this is really more about creating an opportunity for those cats to meet the public, just like I said, kind of like a, a Petco adoption event. As well as there are, Ms. Freddie's addressed this in her written submission previously. There are lots of benefits, social benefits and psychological benefits of being able to be around cats, and I think even more so these days, if, if kids do get to come back on campus, there's a lot of value in animal therapy, so it can kind of create that, that opportunity and fill that space as well. So yes, so we believe it falls into the definition of, of service.
The comments. At this, at this point, I'm going to open the meeting for public comment, so if there's any member of the public, please turn on your microphone, state your name and your address, and whatever comment you care to make, we're happy to hear it. Work. Where's the? Chris? Hello?
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 My name's Kate McPartland. I live at 55 Main Street. I'm actually right across the street. I definitely can see, so I already own cats, and I heard about this project, and I was kind of excited to go in just as a cafe, and we totally viewed it as a service as far as just wanting to go in and stop by and, you know, get tea and hang out with cats, so. Yeah, just wanted to voice that that was something my, everyone living in my apartment was looking forward to.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment?
Hey, guys. This is Jessica Goodrow. I live at 26H Piscassick Street in New Market.
Our old one, you know, it works, it's just slow.
If someone has their microphone, if people had their microphones on, just turn them off for a second while, while we hear from Ms. Goodrow, and then we'll circle back to you. Ms. Goodrow, please go ahead.
Thank you. I live here in New Market, and I just think a cat cafe would be so great and so valuable, a very great addition to, to our small downtown area, and I'm a personal, personally a huge cat lover. A lot of my friends have told this, this idea to, and they absolutely love it, and they definitely want to come visit and and experience it themselves, and so I think it'd be a really great, not only a draw to New Market, but just really helpful on the individual level. So I'm definitely, definitely for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Catherine Steer.
Yeah, hi. My name's Catherine Steer. I live at 8A Bay Road. Also a huge supporter of this as a, as a concept, and I will also repeat that when I posted on my Facebook page that we might be getting a cat cafe, I had several people from as far away as my friends in Nashville and also in northern New Hampshire say, we will definitely be coming to visit New Market now, and, and just, just to visit that, so I, I, I do think it would be a draw for out-of-towners to bring them into our town as well.
Thank you. Joshua and Kayla Raymond?
Hi there. My name's Joshua. I live at 417 Hanses Ridge Road. I live in Springvale, Maine. I've been friends with the Ferretties for probably about a decade. And just being from southern Maine, even news about the Tipsy Tabby has spread to even here, and a lot of people are really excited and are absolutely willing to travel out to New Market. Not only for the Tipsy Tabby, but for any other business down there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other member of the public care to comment?
Um, hello?
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 Hello, yes.
Hi.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Carly Anderson, and I live at 65 Princeton Drive in Hooksett, New Hampshire. I am very excited about the possibility of a cat cafe coming. My fiance and I are constantly looking for places to go that aren't, you know, hu- huge corporations to travel New Hampshire and find someplace to, you know, go settle down, sit, enjoy the state of New Hampshire, and being animal lovers, and again, animal therapy and being around cats, and, you know, a little cafe that's not a huge corporation like Starbucks, and being able to explore a town like New Market, being able to be up there would just be amazing, and I've shared the post through Facebook and everywhere, and being in Hooksett, I work in Salem, New Hampshire. I've had people share it all around Salem, and I have people from northern Massachusetts all ready to be so excited to head up to New Market, and it would just be such a great experience to be able to go see.
Thank you.
Is that, where is that though?
Where's what?
Never mind, Carly. It's Diane is, our town planner is neglecting to mute her microphone. She's on a separate phone call.
Hang on.
We're generally pretty semi-formal here. I would prefer, if there are people who are not from New Market, to hold your comments for a minute. Are there any people, members of the public from New Market who'd like to comment on the, on the application who have not already done so? Okay, anyone else not from New Market care to comment very briefly on the application? I see Ben Small has a microphone activated. Is Ben Small there?
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep, my name's Ben Small. I'm from 3425 Emanuser Farm Road in Marietta, Georgia. I just wanted to say I've known this couple for a long time. They're a very ambitious young couple who always go above and beyond and accomplish the goals that they set. I definitely see this business being something that'll, that'll thrive, and I can see that these two are going to do an amazing job. I've seen them do some amazing things that I haven't seen other people do, and I just want to say that I support them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Small. Any further comment from the public?
Could I add one more comment actually about Ms. Freddie, which I think, I think she neglected to share in her, in her own intro. She does come from
Sorry for just for a second. This is Attorney Hayden speaking.
It is. I'm sorry. My apologies. Yes. She, Ms. Ms. Freddie's father is very involved in local government where, the town where she grew up, and you know, I think since so many people have had great things to say about them, I would very much see both of these two becoming very deeply entrenched in the town and being of great service to the town, just based on my short time that I've had to get to know them. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further, any further comment from the public on the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and open the hearing for questions, comments by the Board. Any member of the Board care to comment on the application? Have any questions for the applicant or her attorney?
Chris, Bob Daigle here. I'm just wondering why they selected to call this a service? I looked down through the accepted uses and, you know, they could have called it an educational facility or a few other things like that. What was the thought process behind sticking with just a service?
Sure, I can address that. We felt based upon our conversations with and our review of the possible options, that that seemed to be the most fitting for the way that we perceive the what's happening with the cat side of the business. But you, you certainly have a point. It could be something that would fall into the educational space, but I, I think where the objective is really to allow these cats, who are adoptable animals, to have the interaction with the public and hopefully be adopted, that felt like the better fit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak if I may. Diane Hardy?
Diane, if you'll hold on for just a second, I will let you speak. Let me, let me see if there's any other Board member who wants to speak first, if you don't mind. Any other Board member care to comment or have any questions for the applicant? Okay, Diane, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, in my capacity with the town, I'm the zoning administrator, and one of my functions is to interpret, administer, and enforce the zoning ordinance, and I work hand-in-hand with Mike Hoffman, who's our code enforcement officer. Any decisions that we make, administrative decisions, are applicable to the ZBA pursuant to the state RSAs, and this application is before us under that provision of the state RSA. I wanted to just kind of give everyone an overview of the zoning. You wanted to know, I believe, someone asked, well, what's the basis for this? Was it considered a service? Was it considered restaurant, retail, and since I'm the one that made the decision, And since I'm the one that made the decision, I'd like to have the opportunity to speak because I worked very closely with the building official, the code enforcement officer in viewing this. I also consulted with our town legal counsel, John Radigan. I just want to give you a overview that this is located in the M-two zoning district. And the M-two zoning district is our downtown zoning district, which provides for a variety of uses that are typically found in a downtown. And this is the first time I've been here for fourteen years. This is the first time that we have ever had a request for an administrative decision from a staff decision that was made. And I wanted to just give you an overview that we do have in our zoning ordinance, a table of permitted uses. And it includes a variety of uses in this mix you song, residential, commercial. And if you go down the list, which is in table thirty-two fifty-six, there's a whole array of uses that are allowed, including retail, including services, including offices, restaurants. It's probably the broadest zoning classification that we have in the town zoning ordinance. When this first came in, Ms. Ferrari approached us. And I was very cautious in reviewing this use. And not so much that, that, that the uses themselves, in, they were not appropriate, but more so that this is a combination of two uses. This isn't just a restaurant. This isn't just a, a cat shelter or a rescue shelter or boarding facility. It's a combination of two. So that immediately raised red flags to me. And I recognize that this is a very new idea here in New Hampshire. And I applaud the applicant for her ability to come forward with a very feasible proposal and moving this forward. And I just want to be, you know, make sure that it's understood that because it's so unique and unusual, this is the first one in the state of New Hampshire. The first one in the region, I believe, was in two thousand and fifteen. If I'm not mistaken, it might have been a case that went before the city of Boston in their zoning department. And they went through a extensive ZBA process to get approval for that particular application. And I understand that other countries like Japan and Europe have tried this idea and it's worked out really great. There's a few handful, I guess, here in the United States. I guess I looked at it in terms of the combined use, that there are some particular impacts associated with this that shouldn't be overlooked. Public health and safety aspects. And I did learn very quickly on that this is something that is licensed by the State Department of Health and Human Services and the State Department of Agriculture. And since my first meeting with Katie, she's come a long way in putting together some very extensive information. She's done her homework and her research. And she has tried very hard to address many of the issues that had come up in our initial discussions. So I, initially I was very skeptical about it. And because it's so unique and unusual for Newmarket, I did consult with John Radigan, our legal counsel. And we sat down together and we reviewed the uses. And it has always been my interpretation as a zoning officer, if a specific use is not listed in the table of permitted uses, that it's not an allowed use in that zone. I didn't see anything in there about animal shelters or boarding facilities for animals. And nor did I see anything that combined those use. So given that, I was advised by legal counsel to take a very conservative approach to this. And since it's so new and unusual, that really this is something that perhaps the zoning board, through their powers and their authority, can review, provide the opportunity for public comment. And as I said, there's been a lot of information provided to date that really do support what the applicant's proposing to do. I just thought in all fairness, as the zoning administrator, I should have the opportunity to explain our justification rationale for the denial, which was both a joint decision between Mike Hoffman and myself. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the board members have.
Okay. Any members of the board have any comments or questions arising from Diane's comments? I will say for seeing none, I will say for my part, that I think it's entirely appropriate for this to come before the board. I don't, I think that the denial at the initial stage is very appropriate. And it's very appropriate when we're in these unusual situations for the public to have an opportunity to comment. And it's very helpful. So I appreciate the position that, that, that our zoning officials were in. But it's ultimately up to the ZBA to determine whether or not the use that's proposed, either as-is or subject to some kind of reasonable conditions, is sufficiently consistent with the definitions of things in the ordinance and can be managed in a way that's consistent with public health, safety, and welfare, that it'll meet the language, spirit, and intensity ordinance. I think the ZBA, my opinion, this is just my personal opinion, has no desire to stifle people who want to be creative, who want to be entrepreneurial and look at things differently, provided we can have some reasonable assurance that there's, again, public health, safety, and welfare are, are being protected. And the language of the zoning ordinance is being honored in its, both in its letter and in its spirit.
I respect whatever. Can I make one more comment? Just that I respect the board's position on this. And that's why it's before you, because there was a lot of ambiguity in use, whether or not it met the criteria that's in our ordinance. I do say that if the board decides tonight to approve this, that I would like to make sure that there are conditions placed on the approval, that it, that there is close adherence to any requirements of the Department of Health and Human Services and also the Department of Agriculture. We do have some correspondence from the state health department, that there needs to be a food service application provided. And that these permits be issued prior to any certificate of occupancy for both, both of those uses. So that would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Diane. We're thinking along the same lines. So.
May, may, would this be, would I be able to comment just briefly?
Absolutely.
Sure. And Ms. Hardy and I absolutely appreciate your position. I wanted to, to start with that. And I absolutely agree, when you have something completely novel like this, you know, as, as much as I know Ms. Ferretti, you know, who, who knows who would be out there trying to do something that, something novel and unique and new that may not be quite as conscientious as, as I feel Ms. Ferretti has been. So I do want to clarify as well that, that we absolutely agree that the, the health aspect, as well as the animal safety aspect are both things that Ms. Ferretti has considered and is acting in a way that's extremely conscientious of that. I think she said earlier that she's, she's already looked into or even addressed some of the ag questions that will arise. And certainly FDA regulations apply here. And it's extremely important to keep the cat area separate from the food service area. And one of the important aspects of that is ensuring that there will be no reusable food service items permitted in the cafe. It will be just like you're taking your, your food to go. So she will be using biodegradable, single-use service items that will be taken into the cafe. No reusable things will be going in there at all. So I did, certainly we are absolutely on board with those restrictions being in place. And, and she certainly intends to work through the appropriate channels to make sure that all of those requirements are being met. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. So any, Bob, did you want to comment?
Just, I believe in reading through the material, that you have a business plan in place and it's reviewed by some financial institution. And they're on board. They feel it's a viable plan and they're going to back you?
Yes, thank you, Bob. So I have a loan from Primary Bank and through the SBA. The SBA is waiting on certificate of occupancy to, to fully fund. But they supported my business plan and allowed us to purchase the building for this business. And that was Primary Bank and the SBA and the Regional Economic Development Center. They also provided a loan for the renovations to restore the building and make it safe. Because there were some major not-safe aspects in the structure of the building. So we've already repaired those problems with the Regional Economic Development Center's help.
Thank you. I remember going through the, the renovation part. You were before us before. So, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. You're welcome.
Any further comment from the board? At this point, I'm going to propose that we, I don't know what's the right terminology, grant the appeal, permit the use, subject to the condition that the applicant will comply with all applicable state and federal regulations, including without limitation, Health and Human Services, Department of Agriculture, FDA, and whatever else may be out there that apply. That gives us, I understand that you're already legally obligated to comply with the law. But I think it's important that the public understand that this is a, as far as the ZBA is concerned, this is a condition of your use of the property. We, we are concerned with public health and safety and the health and safety of the cats as well. I have three at home myself. And my experience is that cat people tend to police themselves and others. But I think it's important that we make that as, as an express condition of the, granted the appeal, I guess is the right terminology.
So, Chris, just to clarify, you're, you're making the motion with the conditions that Diane has attached to it? Or would like to see attached to it?
Yes, I'm, I'm stating it just more broadly, that I would move to grant the appeal and permit the use on the express condition that the applicant will comply with all applicable state and federal law and local ordinances, including without limitation, any requirements of the Department of Health and Health and Human Services, the Department of Agriculture, and the FDA, the Food and Drug Administration, as I understand it, and any other regulations that I can't think of that may apply.
I'll, I'll be glad to second that.
Any further comment or discussion? Okay. Wayne Rosa?
I vote aye.
Steve Minutelli?
Aye.
Bob Dagel?
Aye.
James Drago?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The ayes have it. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item of business is the public hearing for an application for variance. Reference sections thirty-two dash fifty-six of the Newmarket zoning ordinance, requested by North Point Realty, Inc., to permit the construction of a duplex in the R-two zone where duplexes are not permitted. The existing house and outbuildings will be demolished. The property is located at two fifty-eight Wildly Falls Road, tax map U-four, lot six-eight, in the R-two zone. And Mr. Phoenix, Attorney Phoenix is here. And Mr. Rabenius, good evening. You've heard basically, you've heard basically how we, how we try to do things. Going to give you, give you an opportunity to present whatever additional information you'd like to present. Please assume that we have read your materials carefully. So you don't need to read it to us. But this is your opportunity to say whatever you'd like to say in support of your application. Then we'll go to public comment, open that, close that, and move on to comments from the board. We will give you an opportunity to respond to public comment if you choose to do so. So Attorney Phoenix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tim Phoenix, an attorney from Hopeful Phoenix, Formlea, Roberts, and Portsmouth. I'm here tonight on behalf of North Point Realty. Paul Rabenius is here. He's the principal. Also with us on the screen is Brenda Colbo from TF Moran. They've done the technical work, the plans. Full disclosure, I have with me another lawyer from my firm, Monica Kaiser. She's not going to present, but she's going to help me if I mess up the share screen. Because I'm a novice. This is my first time at that. And it'll go smoother if I start making mistakes. I'm going to try, I'm going to share the screen right off, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, go ahead. If I can figure out, I think I need to.
Okay. Monica just applauded me because I apparently did that right. So this is the plan. I've only got a couple of things to show you. What we have is two fifty-eight Wildly Falls Road, Route one fifty-two. It's a very large parcel. It's over five acres, just a little over five acres. And it's along the shore of the Piscassic River. As you can see here, on the lot is a home and a number of outbuildings that are in pretty poor condition. You can see here that these buildings actually are up here to the over the front lot line. These are right on the lot line. This is very close to, if not over, the sideline. And it's a little hard to see here, but you can see these various lines that are the setbacks here and here and the state line back here, which are the required, if you will, wetland buffers from the Piscassic River. So the, the zone allows half-acre lots. So we've got a lot that's ten times the size that's necessary for a lot, a house lot in this zone. So Paul originally looked at subdividing the lot to make two lots and put a house, a house on each of two and a half acres. But as you can see, the lot is significantly constrained by these wetland and related buffers. So after doing an analysis, he felt, and I agreed when I got involved, that two homes on this very large lot, where two homes would be allowed on an acre, seemed reasonable. So it was either go with a conventional subdivision, you know, cut the lot in half, let's say, and put a house here and another one over here. But the house that's over on this side would end up having, to get dimensional relief for the wetland setback. So given the, the nature of that particular area, the fact that it's, it's a kind of a transition zone between R-one?
R-one.
R-one, which is over here, which is less dense than the municipal zone, M-three, which is over here, which is more dense. It seemed reasonable to put a duplex, which, what requires relief, because duplexes are not allowed, but also allows us to avoid requesting dimensional relief. And we thought that having the duplex that is outside of any wetland buffers is better for the environment and would not be problematic because of the location. So I'm going to try to bring up another one here. Whoops, yeah. So this is a set of the photographs we took. And you can see the red arrow here. This is two fifty-eight Wildly Falls Road. And you can see that it's a largely undeveloped area. So you'd have a duplex, you know, roughly in here that is not crowded. It's not out of place with the area. You can see that there are some denser communities over here. There's, I believe, is an apartment building here. The elementary school is here. There's a senior facility over here. And that may actually be in the R-three zone. I'm not positive. Here's the river going through. And then we've got the denser downtown area with other schools and dense home areas over here. And so here, I'm just going to show you some photographs. This is the main house. So as you're facing the lot, it's to the right. You can see the outbuildings behind it. This is down the street. And you can see on the left, that's the garage structure, very close to the road. Pretty poor condition. Very close to the lot line in the house that's next door. There's it from the backside. So the idea is to clean all of that up and put the duplex on, which is shown on the plan. Let's go back to that. So here's the proposed plan with the duplex. And you can see everything's been taken out over here. So we're cleaning up the streetscape, cleaning up the buffer, and putting the duplex over here, which is fully compliant with the dimensional requirements. And then just, it wasn't in my packet, but I think it was in the one Paul originally submitted. This is what the, the four sides of the duplex. So that's the project. I'm going to go back here to I'll just leave it there. So as I said, the only variance we need is to have a duplex on five acres where point five acres is required for a home, but it's only single family homes are permitted in the zone. Going into the variance requirements, the first two are, I always do together, you've probably heard that before, based on some case law that I've cited in my memorandum. And that's that the variances are not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. And the test is whether granting the variance conflicts with the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. As my memorandum states, we looked at what the purpose of the ordinance, which is to guide the character of growth, development, and change in order to provide for the public health, safety, and general welfare, balancing the needs of the process of growth, development, and change with the need to preserve enhance those qualities which make New Market a safe and desirable place to live. I then go through a number, ten or so bullet items. They're fairly self-explanatory, and I've explained in my submission how we meet them. I just want to mention a couple of them. One of the, one of the intents of the of New Market's zoning ordinance and master plan is to provide for a variety of quality living arrangements with emphasis on quality neighborhoods. So we've got two dwellings on five acres with almost three hundred feet of frontage, meeting all covered requirements. The duplex ownership, which will be on this very large lot, will allow more moderate income buyers to buy who might otherwise not be able to buy in New Market, especially new. And the other is the, to protect the sense of community and friendly small town atmosphere. This alternate duplex style living, we think, does that. And finally, to advance aesthetic values through design and architecture because the preservation or enhancement of the visual environment may promote prosperity and the general welfare. I hope you would agree that putting up this duplex, which is relatively modest, it's, I think it's well-designed, it's a good-looking building, and it's set back off the road, is certainly more visually enhancing of the environment than the existing home and even more so the other outbuildings that are very close to the road. I don't think those enhance the visual environment and certainly not health and safety. This house will be completely to code, which is unlike the, that the existing one is. So to close out those, the first two requirements for the variance is the courts look at, would the variance alter the character of the locality or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare? And certainly, the character of the locality, as I showed you in the photograph, is somewhat eclectic. The R one zone is nearby, less dense. It goes into this zone, which is actually, this zone is a little narrower. It's wider at the top and the bottom, and this area is a little bit narrower. So this lot is pretty close to both the R one and the municipal zone. And as I showed, it's surrounded by an eclectic mix of other uses, including schools, apartments, senior living facilities, et cetera. So we think that this building fits in with the essential character of the locality and does, so it does not alter it to the negative, and it doesn't threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. The third requirement for the variance is that they will not diminish surrounding property values. So again, we've got an existing situation where the existing home is in poor condition, it's very close to the road. The other outbuildings are over the lot line, very close to the road, and in the buffer. So removing those buildings in favor of something that's new, tastefully designed and set back, is going to enhance the value of this property and thus certainly will not diminish the surrounding property values. The fourth of the five variance requirements is that denial of the variance results in an unnecessary hardship. There's a three-pronged test, as you know. The first is that special conditions exist that distinguish the property from others in the area. So we first have a very large lot for the area, ten times the required size. It's bordered by the Piscassic River, which has fairly healthy setback requirements from it between state and local. So it's burdened by the wetland, the buffer, and building setback violations. So that the application of the setbacks leaves a small building envelope for two homes. And again, it was sort of the choice, do we go with the duplex? Or do we try to get variances from the dimensional requirements? And we thought this was a better choice. All these things together can create special conditions for this lot. The second prong is that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the public purposes of the ordinance and its specific application in this instance. So why do we have use restrictions? It's to make sure that, in general, like uses are in like areas. So you have residential uses in one area, industrial in another, commercial and downtown uses in another. But here, we've got differing kinds of residential uses, apartment buildings, senior living facilities, and other uses such as schools, all in a fairly close diameter, close radius area. So the, allowing this single duplex on this very, very large lot is not going to violate the purpose of the one lot, one house portion of the zoning ordinance. Thus, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the public purposes of this zone, which is one house on a half acre lot, in this application here. The third prong of the hardship test is that the proposed use is reasonable. It is a residential zone. Residences are permitted. It's replacing what could be considered an eyesore kind of a building, and outbuildings very close to the lot line, so we believe it's reasonable. And the final of the five requirements is that substantial justice is done by granting the variance. The test is, if there's no benefit to the public that would outweigh the hardship to the applicant, this factor is satisfied. Any loss to the applicant not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. So North Point has the reasonable right to the use and development of its property, and we think it would be fair to North Point to allow, in this instance, under these circumstances, this duplex, where we are protecting the environment better, we are taking buildings that violate setbacks and are probably, or I'm guess, I'm sure, are not to code, cleaning up the streetscape, so to speak. So there's no harm to the public, given the eclectic area and other uses in the area. But to deny, but there would be harm to Mr. Rabenius and his company as they would be then limited to one house on this very large lot where I don't think you could put ten, but it's ten times the size of the lot that's necessary. So for all of those reasons, we hope you will agree and grant this single variance so that Paul can proceed. We are all here to answer any questions you may have or address any comments to the public. And now I need to know how to unshare this. Do you want me to leave it up, Mr. Chairman, or take it down?
If you could take it down, because I can't see. You're blocking like three quarters of my screen, so if you could take it down, that'd be great. But don't lose it, because we may want to look at it again. Thank you. At this point, I'll open the meeting for public comment. Any member of the public care to comment? I see Liz Doust.
Yes. My name is Liz Doust, I live at two fifty-five Wildly Falls Road. We lived across the street from Joy and Ed Kimball for twenty, it's going on twenty-three years now. Or just about twenty-three years. The, the outbuildings that aren't as beautiful housed a lot of engineering things. Ed, Ed did all the HVAC stuff for some of our biggest buildings in town, or not in town, in Exeter, too. He was a World War II vet, he was an amazing guy, and he was a mechanic in the, in the military as well. So that's what is in all those outbuildings, which I understand are not as attractive. Anyway, or once was what was in there. We have some concerns, living across the street. One of our concerns is looking at, why isn't this being considered a single-family home lot? It really, when we look at what the benefits are or the harm that we're hearing about that could come to Mr. Rabenius, I'm sorry, Rabenit, I want to make sure I say it right, Rabenius.
It's Rabenius, that's fine, you're not the person.
Sorry, sorry. We look at this and say, boy, there's an awful lot of prime wetland on this property because of the Piscassic, and it mirrors the other side of the Loisel conservation area that we put in, in town, a number of years ago. And I guess we look at it and say, why are we trying to pack more people into this property as opposed to just developing a really nice, single-family home as it's zoned for? That would be less of an impact on our environment, for sure. The other question I have is, what is to prevent someone from going for a variance to put another house in later? Even if you put this through, what, what would be there to prevent someone subdividing later? That's, that's another question I have. I, I think there are, you know, you were talking about special conditions for this lot, and there are a lot of special conditions because of how much prime wetland is on there. So we, we look at the plans and everything, and I think Nate and I, my husband and I, both feel that the planning board has seen lots of things come before them. Oh, zoning board, sorry. The zoning board has seen lots of things come before them, and you've had to monitor the growth of our town. I have confidence you're going to look at this and make the best decision, I really do. We're just asking you to consider what, what would it be if we kept it, you know, the single-family home as opposed to trying to fit as many, as many people or properties as we can in that space? Just because it is such a special space along with Piscassic and, and on the other side of the conservation area. That's it.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Anyone at all? I can see a number of people who have not spoken. You don't have to, but if you care to, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I'm Olivia Alby, and I live at two sixty-two Wildly Falls, right next door to this lot. And I do agree with Liz, with later on, you know, somebody else subdividing it again. We don't per se have a problem with the duplex, my husband Zachary and I. And yes, we would love to get rid of the dwellings that are right next door to our lot. They're very close, and the metal will clang in the wind and stuff like that, so it can be scary to our children listening to that. But we do agree, you know, about the subdivision later on, if that question can be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? See no further public comment, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if you want to respond, please go ahead.
Thank you, that was what I was going to ask. Well, I appreciate Ms. Doust and Ms. Alby's comments. Ms. Doust particularly very, very thoughtful and respectful. So some of the things she said were exactly what Paul is trying to accomplish here, which is protect the prime wetland and protect the conservation area. And that's why he chose to ask for approval for this duplex rather than a straight, typical subdivision with, with one of the homes in or partly in the wetlands. So we think this accomplishes that. But when you, if you look at the size of this lot compared to many lots around it, some of which appear to be fairly close to the river, the, we just think it's fundamentally fair to allow this duplex when there are a myriad of other uses nearby. It's not like this is a road, which is full of just single-family homes. And if it was single-family homes on half acre lots, there would be more homes on this land, probably, a little cul-de-sac or something. But obviously, that's not going to happen because of the wetland and the buffer. But we think this is just a fair way to deal with a very large lot, given the circumstances. As for further subdivision, and certainly, that would have, again, come before this board because I don't think anything else could be put on the, on the lot without a, another variance. And the, the board, I suppose, could put some kind of stipulation on it. But I think it's highly unlikely that if this is granted, that the board would be open to having a third house on it, wherever it may be. I think Paul is content with two. He wants to build them, sell them to nice families, and that will be that. Paul, I don't know if you want to comment?
Yeah, I can't comment. I mean, we did research to see whether or not it was viable to put two separate buildings on the property. And there is a buildable area there that we could use and still stay within permissible area. It's just, for me, and the way that I like to do my construction work, is that I don't always follow the maximum amount that you can put. I was more interested in trying to, you know, save the continuity of the land and try to stay away from anything environmental. That's just the direction that I like to go in. What I intended to do there was, is after the buildings are removed, which are in many areas of it actually falling down, I wanted to be able to bring that back to a natural buffer. That will then just grow back to the way that it should be anyway, without any of the structures or any of the, and there's a lot of material that's there from the old business, all of that would be then removed. So my goal is just to be able to try to find a nicer way of making the application to the land instead of having to force-feed it, let's say, and create two separate buildings. You know, financially, it's probably, you know, better if I had two separate buildings, you'd make more money that way. But that really wasn't the intent, that's not the way that we looked at it from the beginning.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. If I can just add one, a couple more things, Mr. Chairman. I'd also point out that I showed you the photograph, the renderings of the size of the building, and there's some numbers on it. I mean, this is two buildings with a total ground floor coverage of about sixteen hundred square feet. You have a lot of, you know, single-family homes that are going to cover, cover that same amount, and have a thirty-two hundred or so square foot home. So this, in my mind anyway, is a two families, a duplex with two families that's about the size of a single-family home that could go on a lot. So again, the reasons that Paul stated, we think it's a pretty fair trade-off to get the benefit, the benefit of the environmental protection.
Okay, thank you. Going to open the floor up now for questions, comments by the board. Anybody have any questions or comments on the application? Seeing nobody activate their microphone, I have a couple of questions. First, this application, Diane, can you remind me, when this initially came in, weren't there some issues with the plan? And is this current plan now been corrected and updated and is now accurate?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Hawkins. When this first came in, there were some boundaries drawn on the plan for prime wetlands and different setbacks and buffers that didn't quite make sense. And I did contact the applicant and his engineer and reviewed what those concerns were, and they have corrected those. And I did review the most recent supplemental, and it does reflect the correct setbacks for those various environmental features.
That's obviously important, because we want to start with the right information and then go from there.
So everything, to my knowledge, is correct on the plan at this point.
So to me, the key question, the central question, is if there was no shoreline protection zone, which is this large ellipse that's running through the middle of the plan, could there be two units on this property? Could there be two, two structures built on this property or not?
Are you asking me for that?
I'll start with you, Diane, and then I'll give Mr. Phoenix and Mr. Rabenius an opportunity to respond to that as well.
There's a very, very small area, a buildable land area, if you exclude all the buffers. And it's not substantial, it wouldn't build, you couldn't put a
And it's not substantial. It wouldn't build, you couldn't put a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot home on that lot, maybe a smaller home, maybe one of these new tiny homes might be an option. But another point that I think is important to recognize is that currently that property is substandard. It's a non-conforming structure. It's right on the frontage. And so there's some benefits to this development proposal as planned, that it would get rid of those non-conforming uses, I guess. But with all, you know, it, it's not the most ideal lot for development, the, the lot that would remain. But certainly, you know, somebody could in the future, Mr. Dow, Mrs. Douse, rather, Ms. Douse, was correct that, you know, I don't think we have the ability to control future zoning variances. If an applicant chooses to file one, I think we have a, a responsibility to view it. Doesn't necessarily mean it has to be approved, but I don't think we have the opportunity to look in the crystal ball and, and predict what might be in the future and prevent that from happening. I know many years ago, we used to approve subdivisions with comments on plans, no further subdivision, and we were told by legal we had to take that off because it took away due process rights from the applicants.
Yeah, but that's what we're talking about. My, my question very simply is, and I'm not sure I got an answer to it, is if there was no shoreline protection zone on this property, could two structures be built on this property in compliance with the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll give one stab at that one, and maybe Diane wants to comment. Uh, my answer to that is yes. You need, you can, you can have as little as a half an acre for a home, and you need a hundred feet of frontage. So, we have five acres and two hundred and eighty-five, if I'm reading this right, feet of frontage. So, if you put a line down the middle of it, bar, taking away the, the wetland buffers, you'd have plenty of room to meet all of the setbacks. So I, my answer is yes.
We do have local setbacks, so there's overlapping jurisdictions here. So, I mean, two, the two hundred fifty-foot shoreline zone is a state requirement. It does not, you know, our local requirements are actually more stringent in some cases.
So I'm not sure, I'm still not sure what the answer to my question is. Is it, is it a question that can't be answered? I mean, to me, that is, to me, that, and let me just finish. To me, that is the heart of, or the hardship issue, is we're asking for a duplex, right? We, we need to get to a duplex somehow, not just any structure. So, to me, i- i- if the issue is, if there was no shoreline protection zone, you could have two structures, then it seems to me, that's a, that's a, that's a better hardship case. If the answer is, you couldn't have two structures, I, I understand it's fi, it's a five-acre lot, a tiny fraction of that is actually buildable, you know, because it's in wetland. That's state, that's a state issue. That's not a new market zoning issue.
That is not correct. We have, we have local zoning that protects wetlands, twenty-five-foot buffer for very poorly drained soils, fifty-foot buffer for poor, for very poorly drained soils.
Right. We're not actually disagreeing.
But we also have, we have restrictions. So when you say, if it wasn't for the shoreline protection law, we have local regulations that are more stringent, is what I'm saying. So it doesn't matter.
Okay.
It's a overlapping jurisdiction.
So taking everything into account that you just said, could you have two, two structures on the buildable portion of this lot? Leaving aside the...
Yes.
You could put a tiny house, just like I said earlier, you could put one of these new tiny houses and meet that requirement. But you would have to have detailed site plans drawn up, and we'd have to probably have a soil scientist verify that there's not going to be any encroachment to those buffers. So it's not a simple question where you can just say yes or no without having engineering done to review it and to make sure it's a viable concept.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, in, initially, we actually did research that, not to the extent of going through, you know, soil analysis, but there was a buildable area that was defined if we were to do a subdivision of the property. And the, and yes, it certainly would not be a large home that would fit on there, but we would meet the setback requirements for environmental issue, you know, wetlands, et cetera. Um, it would have been a smaller one. It still would have met the setback requirements off the road, et cetera. Um, it was, that was the preliminary idea when we purchased the property, was to look at it as a subdivisible lot. So, uh, the, the definition of what we found really, to me, just wasn't conducive to that. This was a much better application if we could move that part forward. If I don't go that way, we don't get approval, that's probably the direction that we will go for, is the subdivision of the land, to be able to put two pieces of property, two buildings on it. That'll be the goal. Now, whether we, we get it all done, again, it was preliminary engineering, but it was done by the engineering team in order to try to qualify.
And Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know that, see, I don't know that, other than me, I don't know that the question you wanted ans, answered was, has been answered. I, I just want to restate it and make sure I understood it. If there were no environmental setback requirements, and this was just a lot that wasn't near any wetlands, you want to know whether you could put two houses on it?
Not on a five-acre lot. See, so, so, I don't, I, I regard a bunch of this lot as being unbuildable, just looking at it.
It is, that's correct.
There's only, there's only, there's only a portion of it that's actually buildable. So...
Right.
Looking at the buildable portion of the lot, leaving aside the setback, the environmental setback requirements, could you put two structures on this lot?
Okay.
Okay.
Because that, to me, Attorney Phoenix, is the heart of the hardship issue, because we need to get to a duplex.
Right.
Not just any structure. So if, if it's, if it's eligible for two structures, then it seems to me it, it's a stronger case for a duplex.
Gotcha.
If it's, if it's, well, I, I can do one house, but it'd be great for me to have two. That's not really a hardship in my mind, just to tell you how I kind of analyze it. Bob, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe phrase it a little bit different. Excluding all of the, the wetlands, buffers and everything, what is the actual buildable area that's left in the parcel? Does somebody, has somebody done that analysis?
Brenda, can you?
Hi, uh, sorry, Brenda Cobble from TFM. Um, that was, uh, like Paul had said, that, that was our original plan, was to do two separate lots on this, uh, piece of property. Once we got into it and we started placing houses on there, we decided to go with the duplex route. Um, so if you were to take a look at the plans, you can see to the right-hand side of the proposed duplex, we do have some space. If you were to put another house there, like a single-family house, would be smaller than what the duplex is. So we have a little bit of room. We could push that over, and then we would put a, um, put a new lot line down, that pretty much right in between, uh, right in the middle of the frontage, and then put another house on the, on the left-hand side. So yes, there would be enough room for a house there.
I guess the question I'm asking, is there a, is there an acre of land there that's not impacted by some kind of a buffer or offset or, or something like that?
I don't have that off the top of my head right now, but I do have my computer up. I can, uh, I can see what it is.
Is that what, that, what you're driving at, Chris? I mean...
I think that'd be very helpful, because I'm, I'm struggling with the, I'm struggling with the hardship to get to the, to get to the duplex. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah, if you just give me a, a couple minutes, I'll, uh, I'll do it on the computer here and I'll, and I'll be back.
Sure, we'll just talk quietly among ourselves.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Diane?
I just wanted to point out that in the R2 zone, the minimum lot size is a half-an-acre and a density of two units per acre. And if you, you know, set aside the, the wetlands buffers, you should be able to build another house on that lot. Not necessarily, uh, as I said, a huge house, but there is a footprint there. So there, that is what the minimum lot size is, or that's what the density requirement is for an R2 zone.
That's exactly what Paul asked. Is, is there an acre of buildable land on this, on this lot, subject to, subject to setbacks?
You don't need an acre. You need a half an acre. I wanted to clarify that. You don't need a whole acre.
He's asking for two units. So we're looking at a duplex here, so it's to build two houses. He could build two houses. He's asking for a duplex. So basically, trying to reduce the impact.
That's correct. Uh, members of the board and Mr. Chairman, ju- just keep in mind while Brenda's looking at that, is the ordinance doesn't say you have to have a half acre that's not impacted by a buffer. It says you have to have a half acre.
Correct.
So, theoretically, if, if this was laid out differently, you could still have homes on a half acre, all of which, except the small building envelope, is, is buffer. So in other words, answering the question whether there's a half acre of non-impacted land doesn't really get us to the, to the two, to the, to the question. I'd also mention that, and I, I admit I have not investigated this, but at least theoretically, there's the possibility that the existing buildings, uh, known as the garage on these plans, um, that could potentially be redeveloped as a home without moving. Not positive about that, but, um, it's something to consider. And again, you know, our, our effort before you folks, and we appreciate the thoroughness of your review, is, you know, balancing all of the issues. And as Diane said, you know, some of those issues are the location of the existing buildings. So it's not just, uh, in my opinion, respectfully, it's not just, you know, getting to the duplex. It's getting to the duplex, given that we're staying out of the buffers, removing older buildings close in proximity, over the lot line, et cetera.
I did, something else, Mr. Chairman, for the benefit of the board. Now, minimum lot size requirements, we are required by our own local ordinance to exclude any very poorly drained soils from the calculation. So you have to have a half an acre of good soil, not poorly drained or very poorly drained soils, to meet that requirement. Likewise, for poorly drained soils, only twenty-five percent of the lot can be those wetland-type soils, and that includes the buffers as well. So it's a little more complicated, and, you know, perhaps we should bring this to the planning board and have them review it and see if it's a viable subdivision, and if not, they can turn it down and they can come back to the, the ZBA, and, uh, we'd have a clearer sense of where they stand.
Hi, this is Brenda from TFM again. Uh, so I got point six-six acres of buildable land, um, and that's excluding the yard setbacks and the hundred-foot, uh, wetland setbacks for the structure setbacks.
Right.
How much, I'm sorry, two, twenty-five-hundred?
No.
The figure amount. What was the figure you just mentioned?
Point six-six acre.
Point six-six acres, and how many square feet?
That's twenty-nine thousand, one hundred ten.
But she's saying that's excluding the setback, right?
Correct.
So it's actually more than that. That's, this is the point Attorney Phoenix was just making. It's actually more than that.
Yes, but you asked...
Under the way he reads the ordinance, under the way he reads the ordinance.
I thought you were talking about buildable area.
Yeah.
Because we don't consider, well, I had, didn't consider the, um, area within the setbacks to be buildable.
Okay.
But it still would be count, as Mr. Chairman just said, it would still be countable as a acreage for the si, for lot size considerations.
Oh, yes, yes.
That was, yeah, that was acknowledging your argument, Attorney Phoenix. I am...
That's correct.
Did you exclude a hundred percent of the very poorly drained soils?
I'm sorry.
Did you exclude a hundred percent of the very poorly drained soils in the buffer? Because that cannot be part of the minimum lot size under the town zoning ordinance.
Um, we did not do soils analysis, but I did not include any area within the wetland buffer at all, so, uh, it would not be.
So it's, it sounds to me like we do have, we do have a viable acre to, to work with over there.
Yeah, I, I'd say so.
Okay. All right. Uh, any, any other questions? And I'm sorry to dominate the discussion. Any other with my comments? Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just one thing. I knew Ed fairly well when I first moved into town, and, uh, was an extremely, extremely creative individual. Uh, he could work magic in those shops. He once told me there was nothing he couldn't do. It just cost more money.
You wouldn't believe some of the treasures I found in that, that shop, that were tucked behind a, a cubby or something, that little steam motors that he built by hand. I was just, he was definitely an inventive guy.
Him, him and Arnold Dennett up on, um, that swamp road were, were lost treasures.
Pretty good stuff.
Is there any further, uh, comment or question from the board? Wayne, I see your microphone on. Mr. Rose.
I don't think, a couple things. I don't think we can consider future subdivision. I, 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 I don't think we can really consider that and vote against this because of that. That would, I, I don't agree with that. The other thing is, is I think, and I knew Ed too, so I'm, this is in no way detrimental, but I think we have a, an opportunity here to clean up the place, more or less, for lack of better words. Clean up the place and put something very presentable, um, on that lot. That's my comments.
My one is, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that, that's a good point. You know, when the duplex is sold, you know, basically what, you know, the, the land value or the ownership of that land then becomes the whole property. It's, it's not just, you know, that, the, the building footprint. So trying to subdivide that afterwards, I, I, I don't even think that you could do that. You'd have to, you know, take the ownership of that and then, you know, redistribute it by deed and everything else. So I, I don't think that that's something that, that, uh, can be done.
I mean, Chris...
Wait a minute, Wayne, go ahead. Bob, I guess you next.
Yep.
Um, my, my third comment would be, um, the attorney brought up the fact that I, I've seen worse done, more done with worse buildings. I mean, there's a possibility that there, those buildings could be used somehow and, and renovated for residential, and I don't think that's a good thing. Well, I, I've seen worse, or more bizarre things, so, um, you know, I'm not, I, I'm not using that as a threat. I'm just saying, there's, there's other possibilities that, I, I just think this is a good, a good thing for that lot.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Uh, Bob and then James.
Yeah, I, I'm just looking at the proposed layout, and I think the, where the building is located, it would make it very difficult to carve out a piece of land behind it, subdivide it when we get a roadway in there and things like that. So I think the, the, the layout of the duplex itself precludes, to some extent, subdivision in the future.
Thank you. James?
Completely off topic, but I actually do have a hard stop, and if we are, um, going to be deliberating still for a while, I wanted to know whether or not I could abstain from this particular vote and if we could appoint one of the, uh, one of the other folks up.
Do you have another two minutes?
I do, yes.
Okay. Any further comment from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
I, I, I'll make a motion that we grant the, um, relief requested and that we use the submitted material as our finding of fact.
I second it.
Only additional comment is, I'm, I'm, my primary concern was the hardship, and I'm satisfied with the information that we've received, that that criteria is satisfied, and on that basis, happy to support the motion. So let's go around the horn. So let's go around the horn. Any further comment on the motion? Okay, Wayne Rosa.
Aye.
Steve Minutelli.
Aye.
Bob Daigle.
Aye.
James Drago.
Aye.
About I as well. Variance is granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, members of the board and Mr. Chairman. We appreciate the attention.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, same for me. Thank you very much. I look forward to making that a prettier place.
You're welcome, and and have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Any new or old business, any new or old business become before, to come before the board at this time?
I got one question.
Yes.
I I haven't received anything from the town. Do I have to do anything for the town? My my term is up, was up. Do I have to do anything? I've been sworn in or anything.
You're I I would call, I would call the town clerk's office tomorrow. Call, call Terry or Donna tomorrow.
Yeah, they said they were just kicking down the road a piece when I called them last time, so I'm assuming I'm still.
I, yeah, I think I think you and I are in the same terms, Bob, and I and I think that we stay until until we're replaced. But I will, you know what, I I will talk to Terry tomorrow and get us, get us on the town council agenda if necessary.
All right, very good. I've been functioning, but no news is good news, sort of.
Yeah. Any other new or old business to come before the board at this time? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hey, James filed the motion. Bob seconded it. Bob Daigle? Bob, I, I or nay?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
I would I as well. Thank, thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, all. Have a great day.
Thanks, everybody.